Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 10th Board Workshop. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Sorry about the mute, but we just did the Pledge of Allegiance. Hopefully, someone else was unmuted. If not, that's what we did. Welcome to the November 10th Board of Education Workshop. At this point, I'm going to ask if there's any board committee reports?
Well, the newly combined Education and Technology Committee met for the first time together this evening. We are being led by Phil Lum and Scott Min. And so we just really got an update on how all the technology changes and rollouts and advancements have been going this year. The technology in the classroom and in education is more important than ever. So we're hearing about new software, needs for new software, TV and training around new software, device use, troubleshooting issues with devices, and really trying to build a vision statement for moving forward with technology in education in the district, anticipating, you know, ongoing needs and benefits to having technology and involving, you know, needs for technology as well. So, anything I missed? Judah?
And we saw a sneak preview of our forthcoming technology vision statement, which is actually, I think, very exciting.
Thank you very much. Were there any other board committee reports? Go ahead, Nina.
Yeah, I'll just mention that this week, we set a bunch of dates for future meetings. And I guess I'm going to ask the question, are they going to be put on our website? Or how are we going to do that? Which meetings? Finance Committee meetings. I just got a bunch of emails that those dates were already set up. I don't have them in front of me, but...
You should have received an invitation. You want them on the website? Because they're not open to the public necessarily, the subcommittee meetings, but so...
Well, what we're going to have to put out is an invitation to the public to become members of those committees.
Some, I'd spoken with, we spoke about that. Some of those, we typically do have more public, like Community Relations Committee, right?
Well, I guess as the first one gets close, we'll address it.
Yeah, some of those...
I'm just mentioning that, you know, we have set dates for those committees. There's no reason for them to meet now, so...
Well, I'm just, on a note about the Community Relations Committee, that, you know, we're perfectly happy to have those meetings advertised and always welcome any new members who are interested in community relations and they can reach out to the board email address. If you're interested in our community relations, thank you.
Okay, that'll bring us to you, Dr. Glass, our Superintendent for...
Well, good evening, everybody, and good to be here tonight. Just a couple of quick things. In trying to continue our communication with the community, we have scheduled our coffees, Superintendent's Coffee and Conversation, to now go virtual because obviously, we can't do them in person. So, the next one will be on November 17th at 7:30 PM. The link will be sent out just a little bit ahead of the meeting to everyone. So watch for the link, and we hope that a lot of, we get a lot of people joining us for those. I want to thank everybody who came out to our last board meeting, was very well attended. We heard from a lot of people, wondering if we could figure out how to bring more students into school for more in-person instruction. We appreciate that input. We would all love to be able to do that. It's extremely challenging. I think I sent out something on the 30th of October, try to give everybody the rationale, let people know that we have been looking at that. And we will continue to look at anything that is feasible. Particularly at those earlier grades, we understand that it's a real challenge for our young ones to, you know, be learning in a virtual environment for long periods of time. And yet, we have some constraints. And so we will continue to look at that as we make plans for the second semester. You know, if there's anything we can do to improve the situation, we sure will. But, you know, we're still exploring what is realistic, what is safe within the current environment. And, you know, along that lines of safe, I want to mention that we've seen in the last two days, a very concerning uptick in the number of cases that we've had. And right now, just since Sunday night, when we learned of the first case that we had had in quite some time, we are now at up to five different cases just in the last two days. And so we have 150 students not quarantined and about 22 staff quarantined. And it's affecting every building with the exception, right now, of Waverly. So, we had, just to recap, at the middle school, a case, 24 quarantine, seven staff members. At Greenville, Greenville itself is fully remote. The whole school is not quarantined, but Greenville is fully remote because we can't, because the vast majority of the staff has to be quarantined. And we have about 37 students and about 35 faculty in that situation in Greenville. At the high school, we have two different situations. One involving a student athlete who encountered a student athlete from another school last Saturday when playing. So, you know, this has caused the team to be quarantined. And then we have a situation with 46 students and seven staff today being notified that they have to quarantine. And Ann Hutchinson today got a case resulting in 20 students and eight staff being quarantined. So this is all very, all we've been doing really for the last two days. And so, you know, if this continues, it's going to become impossible to staff. I just want everybody to know that. We really need this to slow down a little bit because if it continues at this rate, we simply will not be able to staff. And, you know, I've spent some time in our buildings the last couple of days, and I don't think we have any buildings without any, you know, where there's not someone filling in for someone who can't, you know, staff. We've got substitutes, and then not enough substitutes, and, you know, different people filling in just to kind of make us able to run. So when we get these kind of situations, it becomes very technical. So, just letting you know, right now, we're hopeful that this will be it for a while and we can continue like this. But I don't want it to take anybody by surprise if, you know, we have to quarantine a little bit more. And I'm just pleading with our community, you know, do everything you can. This is a 24-hour-a-day enterprise. It's not just what we do in school. It's what we do at home. It's what we do after school. It's, you know, we've got to limit the contact, and that's the only way we'll be able to keep going in the hybrid model. So, let's hope, and we're going to keep doing everything we can to stay, you know, in this current situation. And maybe down the line, you know, be able to bring students back more. First things first, we've got to be able to hold on to what we've got. And we need everybody, and I mean everybody, to just kind of realize that there's fatigue, but just, you know, do our part, keep those masks on, keep distanced, and, you know, don't come in contact with people if you don't need to. And maybe we can get this, you know, a little bit reined in, and after this cycle passes, we'll be in a better shape. So that's it for number four, other than saying thank you to all of our veterans who we honor tomorrow for your sacrifice, for your courage, and for all you've done so that we can enjoy the freedoms that we enjoy. Thank you to all of our veterans who serve now and who have served us.
Thank you very much. So now, if we're going to go to a general item number four, which is the Food Service Fund. It's a discussion item for this evening. And I think I'm going to be turning the floor over to Lisa Samplupa.
Good evening. Thank you very much. So I just wanted to, I wanted to bring to your attention and start some preliminary discussions regarding our School Lunch Fund. So, as you can imagine, with the closure of the schools last year due to COVID, it had a significant impact on our cafeteria operations. For those of you that are not familiar with it, the School Lunch Fund is a separate fund in the district. It's represented on our financial statements, but it's separate from the general fund. One of the requirements of the School Lunch Fund is that it be self-sustaining. It's not supposed to be funded with taxpayer money unless it's authorized by the Board of Education. But the idea is, is that it sustains itself, that the revenues that are taken in offset the costs to provide the service for the students. So with that being said, I'm going to share, I didn't do a presentation, but I am going to share my screen, and I'm going to show you a spreadsheet that has some information that I wanted to go over. Can you all see that? Okay. So just for comparison purposes, I started with the 1718 school year and the 1819 school year. And the idea is to generate some sort of profit every year, build up your fund balance. And then you turn that money around, and you reinvest it in equipment. You provide new cafeteria tables, things like that. So that's where we were, like at 1718. We showed a bit of a loss, but we made an investment. I believe we had to buy some new equipment. I know last year, we bought some cafeteria tables. We did some floor work in the cafeteria floors. And then we hit 1920, and our fund balance, which started the year at about $86,000, ended up at around $22,000. Now, not all of that was attributable to the program. Like I said, I believe we bought cafeteria tables for Waverly at the beginning of last year, so that contributed to some of it. But most of it was the school lunch program. So we started this year, not really knowing what to expect, hoping for the best. We didn't know what participation was going to look like. We just had no idea whether kids were going to be buying lunch or what the case would be. And once we got into September, October, it became quite apparent that we were getting slammed, literally. So based just on two months in, you can see that we're running a loss right now, about $81,000. It's wiped out our fund balance. And right now, we're sitting with a negative fund balance of $58,000. So, I just want to explain that in September, we had an exceptionally high expense because summer months expenditure, some of the employees at, like our food service director at Chartwell's is either an 11- or 12-month employee. So we don't see those costs reflected. They all kind of come through in September. So September was a big month expense-wise. And typically during a normal year, you make that up over the year, and it's not a big deal. This year, it's a big deal. It hit us hard in September. And for October, we showed maybe a net operating loss of about $15,000. So I've had conversations with Chartwell's. I've had conversations with our food service consultants, and we're all really kind of stuck right now. With participation being what it is, no one's really sure how to make this profitable. It's, the sales are just not there. And I'll go to the next page in a minute. But we're kind of at a point where we may have to make a decision about this program going forward. If we can't sustain a profit and kind of help to get us out of this hole that we're in, we may have to make some tough decisions. So let me just bring you to the next page. So we can kind, I can kind of show you where participation is. So the green box is October from last year. These were audited. These were closed, you know, these amounts were official. So I broke it out by building. The top line is the revenue that we took in for the month of October last year. We had 20 days of service last year, so those are the average sales per day, per building. And just try to get a, to try to get an estimated student count on participation. We divided by like, by what's called a conversion rate. It's a state number, but that's how you convert sales into pupils. So you can see what the counts were last year at this time. So for this year, if you go down into the yellow box, you can see where the estimated student count is significantly less than it was last year. Now, we understood that you're going to have half your pupils in on any given day. Some of them are going to be fully remote. So we were hopeful for maybe a 40% participation as compared to last year. But as you can see on the last line there, we're at 29% in the high school, 34% in the middle school, and the elementary schools are just basically nonexistent. If you go to the far column, you can see total revenues for this October compared to last October. We're at 21% of what our revenues were last year. So we're trying to figure out some options to kind of turn this around. One of the options on the table right now is to eliminate service at the elementary schools since they're not really using it anyway, that we don't feel that anybody's really going to be significantly impacted. They're just not selling lunches there. Waverly has not sold lunches at all this year. They usually don't start, I think, until November, I think, in a typical year. And this year, you know, we just kind of decided to put that on hold until we kind of figured this out. So that's a possibility. I'm getting some numbers on that to see how much of an impact that will have. I'm also kind of hopeful, after speaking with Jeff and Josh, that perhaps the colder weather as it sets in might increase participation in the cafeteria. Kids won't be so likely to go out and get food elsewhere. So we can wait a couple of weeks and kind of see if that starts to turn around, you know, till maybe the beginning of December, mid-December. But if it doesn't, then we're going to have to make a choice. We're going to have to make some decisions. One decision is that we stop operating the program. We may end up the year then with a negative fund balance. The other option is, is that we can continue to run the program, not really knowing if it's going to put us into a deeper deficit or if it's going to help bring us out a little bit. You know, we're going to kind of have to feel that out as we go through the next couple of weeks. So what happens when we get to the end of the year and we have a deficit, right? What does that mean? So I spoke to our auditors today to make sure I conveyed the correct information. So we have two options when it comes to that. One is we can make a transfer of funds from the general fund, which means we're taking money from the pool of the general fund and putting it over to the School Lunch Fund. So we're subsidizing this fund, which is not ideal. We want it to be self-sustaining. The other one, the other option is that we end the year with a deficit, which a controller certainly doesn't like. We'll get a management letter comment on it. She'll have to make some disclosures in our financial statements about it. You know, if we end with a deficit, we can maybe try to, over the next few years, try to make up for it as things turn around. But the bigger the deficit becomes, the harder it's going to be to get out of it. I mean, as you can see from the prior years, we're not making money hand over fist here. We're, you know, barely trying to break even. So if the deficit continues and we end up with $100,000, $150,000 deficit, that's going to take us a long time to make that up over the next few years. I mean, that could take five years. It could take seven years to kind of get that money back into the, into the fund balance. So, just some things to think about. I wanted to alert you, let you know what's going on. I didn't want to hit you with any surprises later on. But I think right now, if I get, if I get meaningful information from the food service company, that closing Ann Hutching-Greenville will reduce significant costs, I think that's something we should move forward with. And then we'll kind of have to see how the other two buildings go.
Probably the same you were going to say anyway.
No, no, I'm mute. All right, so I'm going to mute myself. So I have a couple of questions. I guess the first question is, what's the impact with any students that are eligible for free lunch? Right? And so that's number one. And the other part, I guess, would be, if you run a deficit one year and we make it up from general fund, why does that ever really have to get made back up? Because it's paid for. I mean, I guess that the cafe is subsidizing it, but you do a new budget year to year anyway. So at that point, in theory, it either would become a budgetary item year to year, which obviously, nobody wants to get that, and it's not supposed to be besides. But in terms of, if we cover it one year, we're not obligated to cover it the second year. It either becomes self-sufficient, or we make some other decisions at that point, right? Same decisions. I'm not saying we shouldn't be trying to reduce costs now.
No, certainly, once we replenish the School Lunch Fund, and that's a one-shot deal, yes. And the hope is then, next year, subsequent years, we'll start making money again, and we can start rebuilding our fund balance, right? So it's not an annual thing.
And the other part, so I just don't know, I mean, from... I know that generally, at least in past years, and I don't know what it is this year. I honestly haven't asked. I don't know. There's usually lots of different options for the kids. We try and give them a broad variety, at least particularly in the high school, and even, I think, somewhat in the middle school. Maybe it's just a matter of paring down options. Like restaurants have done simplified menus because of COVID. Maybe it's time the high school does that. Maybe that means less styles. I understand that. But it may just make it cost-wise. I mean, I just, I think there may be a lot of different options here. I would want to get costs out of our building because obviously, if Waverly hasn't started, I assume we have no costs there.
Right.
I agree, looking at the numbers, the elementary schools may not really be using it much either. Obviously, I think we'd have to give some notice to parents as well before you just say, hey, you now need to stop providing lunch. We've grown enough at parents at the moment. That extra task may not sound like a lot, but for parents, it might be. We just need to be cognizant of that. So those are my questions for the moment.
All right, so let me talk about the free lunch, right? So as you know, we don't participate in the federal school lunch program, right? However, we do provide free meals to students who qualify for either Medicaid or SNAP food assistance. So if we wanted to continue that, which I imagine that everybody wants to continue that, I've done some investigating with neighboring school districts. So neighboring school districts who are participating in the federal school lunch program, some of them are currently running. It's called the Summer School Program. Even though it's not summer, it's been extended. But they are authorized to provide free meals to any student under the age of 18, and they don't have to live in their district. So I'm trying to work it out with some neighboring districts that if you could provide us the food, they will get aided, you know, the other district will get aided for it, but we would be able to feed those kids. And the aid would flow to the other school districts that's providing the school. So I'm trying to work that out so that we could, you know, arrange to go pick it up a couple of times a week, every day, whatever the case may be, bring meals here for the students who are in need. So we want to, I'm working on that.
Lisa, did you want to address the simplification of the menu? Because I think that's been going on, right?
Definitely. And, you know, so I think some of the... Chartwell's is pretty confident that participation at the elementary schools is so low because they're not offering hot food, right? Because that's a lot of manpower. That's a lot of, you know, other issues. So, you know, one of their recommendations is that, let's start offering hot food at the elementary schools to increase participation. I'm not sure I want to take that risk. I don't know that it would increase participation, right? So you're making an investment that may not pay off. I think, I think they are offering a pretty wide variety of stuff here. I know that they're doing salads. They're doing wraps. They're doing hot food. It may not be everything that it used to be. But again, I'm a little concerned with expanding the options at an expense that may not turn into sale. So, I mean, I think that's a possibility. I brought that up to them. Why are we offering hot food? Maybe we just need cold options, less manpower. They're afraid then that sales will really just drop off. So it's just trying to find what kids are buying and what they're interested in and seeing what we could do. So they're looking, they're trying to...
They must have that on what's being...
Yeah, so they're trying to figure it out to see what sells most and if we can come up with something.
I think the inability to get back up again, to get something else, is probably also hurting you because my son is always saying, I can't get my second lunch because he finishes his lunch and would typically go get a second lunch.
Right.
I'm sure he's not the only one who does that.
Maybe, correct.
Or buy five brownies for the table or something.
Lisa, if we shut it down in certain buildings like the elementary schools, how hard would it be to start it up again?
Um, I will ask that question, but I don't think, you know, typically, the food service company comes in a week or two before school starts, and they're able to get up and running. So I can't imagine it would be more than two weeks to get back up and running if, you know, things changed and...
It sounds like you got a handle on the problems. And now, and it sounds like you started to investigate some possible solutions. Personally, I think you're right on track. I think we should turn off the service in the elementary schools as soon as possible. If Waverly could get by without it, there's no reason Hutch-Greenville can't get by without it. But you still got to offer people something. And, you know, I say this all the time, any problem you come through in life, someone else has the same problem. So this food company, they have to have other schools that have the same issue. What are they doing in other schools? And I'm sure you're having these discussions with them. So I'm just going through my thought process. You know, other people have the same issues. What are they doing? Some schools never give hot lunches. I know that we looked at vending machines at one time. Vending issues typically are unhealthy. But you know what? Today's day and age, they have healthy vending foods. You know, you could give kids milk, healthy cereals, fruits. They can do a lot of stuff in vending machines. And we should be talking to the food supplier and see if they'd be willing to throw some vending machines into schools, okay? Reduce the staff, okay? And get the thing back flipped around so that it's generating at least a break even, and then maybe a profit. And then when all of this is behind us, we go back to what we're doing. But, you know, I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, we're not the only school with this problem. I'm not sure you know that.
No, we're certainly not. And it's widespread everywhere, yeah.
But I mean, first, you got to cut the bleeding, you know? You got to do triage and do what you got to do.
So, yeah, I mean, if they tell me that cutting Ann Hutching-Greenville will save us significant amounts of money and could make a significant difference...
Well, it has to if there's only 6% of the kids using it.
Then it's certainly something we'll do, you know? So we, I just need to get that from them first.
And I had another question.
Well, I have that thought.
All right, I'll come back to it.
Okay. So my thing is here, it's a discussion item tonight. So our next school board meeting is 24th. Do you think that, no pressure, asking, for our sake, do you think that, you know, you said a few weeks with the food and whatnot. Do you think maybe you'll have some more information on the 24th? And then this is something you feel that a decision, like an action item, needs to take place maybe the first meeting in December? Is that something you're foreseeing, just so we know that that might be the...
What I'm thinking is, we may be able to make a decision about the elementary schools by November 24. I think we'll be able to get a projection for what November's going to look like then. I think we need to be prepared to make a decision on the entire program, I would say, by, you know, by the beginning of January.
Okay.
So, you know, I think we should give it a couple of weeks to kind of, you know, see if the cold weather does bring them back inside. It may, you know, we can try to tweak it and turn some things around, see if that's working by mid-December, you know, before the holiday break, see where we are, and if it's, if we're still just hammering Jangma, you know, I think then we need to have another discussion.
I'd also like to understand what we project, where we think we're going to end up at the end of the year. So just, I thought I heard you say, we ran, we're running approximately $15,000 deficit per month. And plus, we're at a 60, roughly $60,000 deficit now. So in my mind, I just did the math quickly, and that was like $180,000 at the end of the year, if that holds true. Okay. I just want to make sure I understood that.
It could be significant, right? So anything we could do to reduce that $15,000 a month?
So if that projection holds true and we maintain service as is, we're saying that we would have to find $180,000 from the general fund to put in to...
Potentially, if that's what we wanted to do. Or we could live with the deficit, but we could be living with that deficit for a very good long time until we come out of it.
But you don't need more approval to modify, for example, to cut elementary schools. You only need more approval to fund the fund metals.
Correct.
Yes, I have you. I'm muted, so unless you are...
I remembered my question. Thank you. What happened in the spring? What happened between March and June? Did we continue to pay the food supplier for their employees? I know there's a monthly cost. there's a monthly cost.
Right. So we closed March 13. We continued to pay probably for about three weeks because we didn't know if we were going to reopen at any moment. It was about mid-April where I told them that we cannot sustain this. And you also have to remember, at that point, we were still obligated to provide free meals to students. So they were here, they were, they cut back, they were here, they were providing meals. We were, we had participation of literally 15, 17 students a day. It wasn't significant, but I had to have people here making food for distribution. Once we got to around mid-April, that was just unsustainable, because those were legitimately free meals, no revenue coming in, just costs going out. So at that point, I had told Chartwell's that we can't continue this. Chartwell's is also in Scarsdale. Scarsdale does not participate in free and reduced lunch program either, but I arranged with Scarsdale to make the food for us. We sent somebody over there to pick it up a couple of times a week, and Scarsdale would, we reimbursed Scarsdale for doing that, and it saved us tens of thousands of dollars by doing that. And we provided, we continued to provide those meals till the end of the school year, and then over the summer, we did nothing. We weren't, you know, we didn't provide any meals over the summer.
So basically, we didn't pay for the service starting at some point in the spring?
We didn't pay for some things, but they had a lot of food spoilage that had to be thrown away. They had, literally had food sitting in refrigerators that just, you know, they, they did try to use up what they could those next couple of weeks, but if you came in here in the summer, there were racks of chips that had expired. There was a lot of stuff that was just, that they had to throw away. So there were some costs that continued. They weren't significant, but they were there, and they hurt, yeah, definitely.
And my last thought is, if we eventually have to do fund some kind of a deficit, what was it?
I have the mute in between because you're back there.
Yeah, tell me. Okay. I lost my train of thought again. Sorry. Oh, the special COVID aid, okay, that we supposedly got that never got, but can we designate some of that, should we get any, towards this? Because this is definitely COVID-related, even though it's not taxpayer-related. Follows what I'm saying?
Yes, but that COVID aid that we're supposedly getting is used to offset the shortfall in state aid.
See, see, that's, that's the nonsense the government wants us to believe. We got federal aid and the state took it away.
Right.
Okay? So that's the way we have to say it. We don't say it's to offset state aid we're not getting.
But that's what it is. My state aid number's going to be less. If I don't, if I take that federal money and put it towards this, my state aid is lower.
You're only getting a dollar, you're not getting a dollar 10. I hear, I understand that. But what we have to continue to say so that people understand it, is that the state is taking away the federal aid that was given to us, and we got to make sure taxpayers understand that, okay?
So we haven't gotten any of it yet, so...
No, I know, I know, but should there be any more aid that comes in, and we actually get it, question is, can we use that to offset this, because it is COVID-related? And not have to mess up with our inter-fund stuff, just designate the aid to the school lunch program?
No, I don't think we could do that. We can't book it directly into the...
So we still have to vote on that?
I'm not asking you to vote on anything today.
No, if we had to, we still have to, take an action.
Yes, right.
Okay.
I mean...
I got unmuted.
Tara, unmute yourself now.
So I just have a couple of questions. So one, Lisa, worst-case scenario, that we are not able to give lunches anymore to students K through 12. But you are saying that people that are eligible for SNAP will be able to get free lunches?
Our plan is to provide lunches for those eligible students, yes.
Which would be great. My second question is, I mean, we're in a horrible pandemic right now. If people, if there's families that don't necessarily receive SNAP benefits, that they lost their job, would these children immediately be able to get food and lunches?
If we were, if we were able to obtain it from another school district, yes, we could include those students as well, because basically, the program that the other school districts are running are, is like a no questions asked. If you're a student, you get a meal. We don't care if you're from Eastchester, Scarsdale, or Takahoe, because they get full reimbursement from the federal government for it. So we could expand it. It would just be a question of if the other school district could handle a significant increase in their, in their service.
And Scarsdale would generally be, who would be receiving?
I'm actually speaking with Takahoe right now. So I don't, you know, while Takahoe could maybe provide us with an additional 20, 30 lunches a day, I don't know that we could say, could you give us 200 lunches? Could you give us 300 lunches? That would be a conversation I would have to have.
But if this is worked out, there's no questions asked if somebody needs food for K through 12. Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead. Unmute yourself, Steve.
So I know you said you're exploring possibilities where we would have another district supply us. Have we also looked at the opposite, where to get our numbers up, we could be supplying other districts that are in the same situation, where they're looking for another district to supply lunches, and they would pay for those lunches, and, you know, that would get our numbers up and maybe make us sustainable?
You know, I have been kind of feeling around to some other districts, and my concern is other districts that that might work with for us, there's a distance issue. And I'm not sure that, for example, I'll tell you that Briar Cliff is in the exact same, they don't participate in the federal school lunch program. They have Chartwell's, they have the same, it's ident, they provide free lunches, they're hemorrhaging as well. You know, so looking to go in with another school district who could absorb it, it's, I'm not finding necessarily, I think proximity might be an issue, you know, in terms of fresh, you know, freshness of food and all that, and, you know, just time it will take to get food from one location to the other. So it's something I can continue to look at. Yeah, I'm just not sure that that's feasible, but we'll see.
No, I guess, even though it may not require board action, since we don't have the public here really today, I mean, I'm looking at whoever attendees are, there's not really a public presence, and I wouldn't want to just spring this on the public. I really would be very hesitant to be taking any action despite the fact that I get that we're hemorrhaging. Try to at least a board meeting to give them a heads up.
Right.
So, you know, November 24th, right around Thanksgiving, I don't want to be saying to people, and by the way, when you come back from Thanksgiving break, there will be no lunch. That's just not a great message I want to be sending around the holidays. And I understand we're hemorrhaging money and I have an obligation to the taxpayers, and I get that. I just, we need to be sensitive here to some extent as well, that, you know...
I think, to add to that point, I think we should probably put something in our weekly newsletter about this problem, and the fact that we're looking into possible solutions, and that cutting off the elementary schools is a possible solution somewhere down the road at some point, just so that people have enough time to put more.
Yeah, I mean, I think also, I'm sorry, I mean, I think also, once we have a real handle on what all the options are, it may be something where we survey the community and say, hey, are you more likely to buy lunch if there's hot food offered, or less? Or doesn't it matter? I mean, I think, you know, and I get time is of the essence here to some extent, so I understand that our options may be limited, but I think to do this without really having any public input, and I get that we're charged with making some of these decisions, and I understand that, might be a little helpful.
I mean, that's why we're starting a conversation.
Right, no, and that's why, that's why I think we should be doing, starting to say, hey, this is an issue, we're going to have to address it, but, you know, and I get that, you know, I asked you this for decisions tonight, I appreciate that, because I really wouldn't want to be making this decision tonight without having had some time to think about it, and I think the community would probably be in the same boat.
Okay.
I think also, I mean, when we do make a decision, it doesn't have to be implemented immediately. I think it might be a good idea to say, you know, if we make a decision at the end of November to give a month, you know, advance notice that, you know, maybe January, after the, you know, December break, you know, this will take effect, as opposed to something more...
I agree.
But if we have, if we have, if we only close the elementary schools, not close, reduce the elementary lunch, so there's only 15 kids that each school that are getting lunch, I mean, would we be able to, Chartwell's allow us to, I don't know what the term of the contract is, allow us to have the high school make 15 sandwiches every day and send them for kids who need it, you know, unexpectedly, to have at least a resource, and that's a lot cheaper than going to Scarsdale, and it may give us, for lack of a better word, a stay of execution on the big picture, because maybe we're spending $10,000, you know, in cost.
I think that's basically what is happening now. I mean, they're not making hot food at the elementary schools, and I think that's, I think that's the reason for the low participation, is that it's just cold sandwiches and stuff being sold at the elementary school.
But they have staff there.
They do have, they do have staff there to distribute, so that would be a savings if we pulled that out, but I still think that they're going to need staff there to distribute. But that, you know, it's something we're going to look at. Like, like I said, if, if closing or stopping service at Greenville and Ann Hutch is not really going to save us anything significantly, then we'll continue it. I mean, there's no reason to do it.
Does anyone else? Obviously, this is a discussion that's going to continue, and I appreciate you bringing this information to us, because it's something that in the future, in the next few meetings, we'll have to make some sort of decision or action item on. So thank you for the time. This, Lisa, I appreciate you bringing it to us, and all the words, questions, I'm sure if you have more. We'd still love to receive them via email, or if you think of them throughout the rest of the meeting. But at this point, if everyone's comfortable, I'm going to ask Tara to move the meeting to read out and approve, motion to approve, five, six, seven, eight.
So 5.1, the approval of minutes for the October 27, 2020 Board of Education regular meeting. 6.1, approval of personnel agenda, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the personnel agenda as attached, personnel recommendations 111020, personnel recommendations 111020, and personnel recommendations November 10, 2020. 7.1, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the placements as recommended by the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education. 8.1, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the 2021 to 2022 budget development calendar. 8.2, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the execution of the contract with Mistrachi Mercedes CS Architecture Engineering P O L C for architectural and engineering services for the Eastchester High School and Eastchester Middle School partial roof replacement project at a cost of $127,500. 8.2, I'm sorry, 8.3, S E Q R A Solution E H S and E M S partial roof replacement. And 8.4, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the disposal of obsolete technology from Ann Hutchinson and Eastchester High School for the 2020 to 2021 school year. And 8.5, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the following warrants. Which is... And 8.6, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following donation, $744.08 donation from the Eastchester Music Boosters to be provided to the middle school music department for the rental of musical instruments.
Thank you, Vito.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Second?
I don't know, mute, unmute.
I'm muted. So Vito just seconded it for us, and now, there's anyone that has a discussion or questions? Cheryl?
Just a quick question.
Unmute, are you...
Yes. Just a quick question about the donation. Thank you for the donation to the Eastchester Middle School Music Department for the rental from the Eastchester Music Boosters. So we had it written for Music Boosters, and I, we used to have a board liaison with Music Boosters. So what is, I just was wondering if anyone knows the status of the Music Boosters organization?
I... If I'm not mistaken, I believe the Music Boosters have disbanded, and I believe this is the remaining funds that existed within their account, and they've decided to donate them to us, and I believe that closes out their books.
I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you, Music Boosters.
Vito?
Yes, I have a question on the disposal of the technology, and I guess this is directed at Bill. If I read that correctly, there's like 30 computers we're disposing of? Or... Let me ask this, are we disposing of any computers?
They are, they're picked up by Lyric and recycled under the Lyric...
Do we own them, or do they own them? Do we know?
So they are our computers, however, they, so we had to, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but we had to upgrade to Windows 10, and that necessitated that we upgrade our computers because we couldn't run Windows 10 on the old computers. So by their nature, they're obsolete, they're, they can be disposed of.
The reason I ask is because I'm recently been aware of a organization that supports education in Nicaragua, and they take donations of old computers, and I've, personally, I'm given six tower computers that were in my basement for the last 15 years, not been used, and they'll take anything, because down in Nicaragua, they really don't have anything in these schools. They try to teach kids English and stuff, and rather than, you know, get $15 each in scrap value, I think it would be great if we could do something like that. The organization's right in Connecticut here. I think they're in Westport.
I mean, I guess we could let BOCs know. I know that they collect these computers from everywhere, so...
Even, even like BOCs, if they're getting them from other school districts, because they're still usable, okay? And, you know, I've scrapped computers in the scrapyard. You get $10 or $12 for this ridiculous what you get to them. But, you know, if you could put them to use in a third-world country that they use them to teach kids, I think that's great, okay? But maybe we can look into that, and Bill, if you want, I could give you the name of the person, and if there's anything you can do to, on any equipment like that that we have, that we're getting rid of. Obviously, you got to wipe the drives and all that stuff, but, you know, once that's done, you know, they don't need Windows 10 down there. They'll take anything they can get. Just a thought.
Vito, why don't you send along that information?
I'm sorry?
Send along the information.
I sure will.
Does anyone else have any comments?
Yes.
I have a, I guess I have a question, although I'm not sure you can answer it yet, about the budget calendar. I mean, this really sort of launches the budget season, even though we're very much in the early stages, and in a normal year, we often have difficulties sort of pinning down the state on certain budget items, and this is far from a normal year, and often that complicates the budgeting. So are you getting any information, either concrete information, or do you have any intuition about any kinds of glitches or delays, or, you know, that we might want to be aware of about the budget yet, or is it just too early?
Yeah, it's too early. I mean, we did get some good news regarding the TRS rate. I mean, we did get some good news regarding the TRS rate. I can share that with you. We currently pay 9.53% of teacher salaries to TRS. They projected that that rate will be between 9.5 and 10 for next year. So essentially flat, which is very good news because that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. We got some unexpected news regarding our sales tax. Our sales tax revenue came in for the last quarter about where it was a year ago, which was surprising. So that was unanticipated good news. So as far as state aid, I have no idea. I don't, they haven't given any hints at all. I think everybody's holding their breath for federal stimulus. I think it all hinges on that. And until we know that, I think the state's not prepared to indicate any either way.
Sorry, my unmuted skills today are lacking. Does anyone else have any other comments, questions? Okay. So do we have any other business?
We have to vote.
Oh, yes, sorry. I was going to sneak it in, but all in favor? Anyone opposed? Jimmy, thank you for that reminder. I forget what it is. So nine is other business. I don't see anything under there. Number 10 is future meeting dates, November 24th, December 8th, and January 12th. I can't believe we're rolling on into 2021, which, you know, many of us are anticipating.
You are for 24th?
No, no. At this point, does, do we have anyone, publics from the com, comments from the public? If you do, you can raise your hand and you'll be unmuted. I don't want to take that as a no. Usually they go quick. And do we have any comments from the board? Yes, Vito.
I just want to echo the superintendent's earlier message to our veterans in the community. Happy Veterans Day, happy Veterans Week. Thank you for your service. You know, we have a very strong veterans group in this town, as we all know, and we are very thankful to them for their service.
I will give a little shout out along those lines to one of the Life Skills Class, Ms. Plin's class. They always do some cards for veterans. And this year, they actually reached out to the local VFW. And I know that the veterans who have already known about it are very touched. So thank you to Ms. Plin's class. And I'm sure there's a few other classes that are participating in that. She likes to teach about Veterans Day and then explain the importance and also make cards. And I know the local veterans will definitely appreciate them. And I was on an email with one of them. So thank you very much for that. It shows a lot of gratitude and is greatly appreciated and a great learning tool and lesson for our students. So does anyone else have any thing? Well, I'm going to say one last little thing before we go to executive session. I'm going to echo Dr. Glass. We need to just stay very diligent and stay on top of things. I would be remiss if I did not mention this right now. As we sit at this meeting, there are a lot of young kids outside on the field. And they're not riding their bikes, and they're not doing things they probably shouldn't be. But it is groups, and it is children, and they're young, and not a lot of them have masks on. And this, wearing masks and not being in groups is the way that we help stop the spread. So if you could just keep that in mind, especially over the next few weeks, we would hate for anyone to have to be quarantined during Thanksgiving, and we are inching up at that point. So that's my PSA for this evening. As we move closer to the holidays, Thanksgiving being my favorite. So I'm sure everyone is thankful for a lot this year. So please keep that in mind as we move forward. At this point, I'm going to call the, I'm going to motion for the meeting to adjourn to go into executive, executive session to discuss the employment history of particular individuals. Can I?
Second.
Okay, I was going to say Steve can first, and you can second.
I unmuted first.
Whatever you would like to do. All in favor? Okay, thank you.